Right, right. Tracy, are we good for video?
Five seconds.
Okay. Good morning. We are going to convene the June 3rd, 2025 Scott County Ditch Board Meeting. If you would join me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number two on our agenda, we want to approve the minutes of the May 6th, 2025 ditch board meeting. Those minutes, have everyone has had a chance to look at those?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, minutes pass. All right, we're gonna move to item number 3.1 to conduct a public hearing to receive information and comments on the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District project to modify, divert waters, and impound waters upon a portion of Scott County ditch 13. So before I do that, procedurally, I'm gonna read a statement here quickly. I would like to welcome everyone who has come today. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments and testimony from all parties interested in the modification, diversion, and impoundment of a portion of Scott County ditch 13, CD 13 hereon. On our consideration at today's hearing is the petition of the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District to modify the function of a portion of CD 13 by diverting water from the drainage system to a water quality practice and iron-enhanced sand filter for treatment and eventual return to the drainage system. The board's consideration of this request is governed by statute section 103E dot 227. Section 103E 22 dot 227 allows a person to petition to impound, reroute, or divert drainage system waters for beneficial use. The purpose of this hearing is to review the engineer's investigation and report of findings and receive comment from those affected by the proposed action. This is an evidentiary proceeding. The proceedings are being recorded and notes are being taken to aid in development of findings and an order. The order of business for this hearing will be as follows. First, Mr. Kolb, the Drainage Authority's attorney, will explain the process, which has brought us to the public hearing and the purpose of this hearing. Following Mr. Kolb, county staff will submit for the record evidence of notice provided for today's hearing. Following county staff, the petitioner and its engineer will present a description of the project and a review of the impacts of the proposed action on the function of CD 13 and other benefited properties. Following presentations, I'll open the hearing for public comment. The board will like to hear your comments on the proposed action and any information relevant to that purpose. If you would like to make a comment when the public comment period is open, please come up to the podium when I recognize you. Please state your name and address for the record. It will also be helpful for you to identify the property that is affected by the proposed project. If you have a specific question concerning the project proceedings, we may ask Mr. Kolb, the engineer, or a staff member to respond. If you have anything in writing you wish to submit, you can provide it to me during the public comments. Any board members have any further remarks before we get started? All right, we're gonna turn this over to Mr. Kolb for the purpose of these hearings. Mr. Kolb, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. We are here today, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, to hear the petition of the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District to modify a portion of County ditch 13. You described generally the process, and I think we should note that in your description, we talked about multiple things: modify, impound, divert. And it's, it's the way the statute is written. Basically, anything that modifies the original construction of the drainage system for a purpose other than the drainage system is considered this modification process under 103E point 227. Today, you are required to review the engineering related to the installation. In the initial phase of this action, upon receipt of the petition, the board did direct this back to Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District with a request that its engineer prepare an analysis of the impact that these modifications would have on the function of the drainage system. That report was returned, so today you have to consider that report along with any other evidence you received today in making a decision. And your standard of decision, taken directly from the statute, which states, if at the hearing, it appears from the engineer's report and other evidence presented that the project will be of public or private benefit, and that it will not impair the utility of the drainage system or deprive affected landowners of its benefit, the Drainage Authority will make an order modifying the drainage system to include any amount, if the board so chooses, of drainage system funds approved for the project at the discretion of the Drainage Authority and issue an order authorizing the project. In this instance, the Watershed District proposes to divert water from the drainage system at its very top end. In terms of contributing drainage area at that location, there's very little impact to the function of the ditch, and that will be detailed and described. The technical description of that will be given, hopefully, by the engineer when the engineer provides its report on the impacts of the installation. The alleged benefit here, which I think is valid, the science will prove this out, and of course, you'll receive additional evidence on this, is the water quality aspects in both the immediate and downstream portions of the drainage system. And of course, the Watershed District will describe some of the unique features of this drainage system, where it runs to, and some of the resources at the bottom end, which is motivating at least part of this project. So again, board, if you find that those statutory criteria are present, that there's a public or private benefit, and that this modification will not impair the use of the drainage system for other benefited owners, then you may order that the modification be allowed. There's a portion of the statute that contemplates whether or not any drainage system funds should be used for this. Oftentimes, that is involved when we're taking an older part of a system out of, out of use and replacing it with something as part of the project. Oftentimes, there's a cost savings to the drainage system. I'm not sure if that, those circumstances exist here, but board, you may consider if there's a specific request, a justification for a request of any use of drainage system funds for the proceedings today or for the actual action that's being proposed by the Watershed District. Does the board have any questions of me?
Members, there's the purpose of the hearings. Any further questions for, for Mr. Kolb? Seeing none, we're gonna move to the overview of notice requirements. Ms. Logge is gonna pull us through that portion of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. A notice of public, of public hearing was emailed to the petitioner and the petitioner's engineers and mailed to the owners likely affected by the proposed modification, diversion, and impoundment on May 8th, 2025.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Logge on the topic of notices? All right, seeing none, we're gonna turn to the petitioners and the engineers' presentation. Mr. Crawford, I presume?
Good morning. I'm Kyle Crawford. I'm the project engineer for EOR, and I'm here on behalf of the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District. And Emily Dick, the project manager for the Watershed is here as well, if there are any questions for the Watershed.
Great, thank you, welcome.
And thank you, Commissioners, for taking the time to review this project and consider this petition. So just a quick overview on the location of the project. This is County ditch 13 and Branch 2A. The project location is indicated in red there. It is central Scott County. It is the primary outlet of Swamp Lake, so it is, as mentioned earlier, on the very upstream end of County ditch 13. And the outlet culvert for Swamp Lake goes under Red Wing Trail, which is a township road. So current conditions, photo on the left there is the current ditch outlet coming out of Swamp Lake. The next photo is an overview of the project. It is currently agricultural land, and the Watershed does have a executive easement with that landowner for the project. The project we are proposing is primarily two components. We have biofiltration pretreatment, which we would be seeding with native, wildflowers and native vegetation, hoping to look something like the photo in the upper right. And then the iron-enhanced sand filter itself would, example of a similar one is on the bottom right. So quick design overview, this is a schematic of our design. You can see Red Wing Trail there on the left. The County ditch 13 is shown in red, so you can see it goes along the northern portion of our project. We're proposing to install a reinforced earthen berm shown in purple here. And then within that, there's a green diversion structure with the removable weir that would divert runoff into our pretreatment basin shown in blue, the biofiltration. And then that would spill over into the larger iron-enhanced sand filter, which is shown in dark blue here. And then, in addition, working with county staff, it was requested that we maintain a maintenance bench along the southern bank of that ditch so that the county does have long-term maintenance access for cleaning out that ditch. With this project, it is anticipated the improvements would remove phosphorus approximately 89 pounds per year throughout the lifetime of the project. And then there would also be an inherent sediment removal as well with this, which would obviously aid and impact the ditch downstream. So looking at the individual design components a little bit closer here, as I mentioned, reinforced earthen berm, a cross-section of it is in the top right here. Primary flow would enter through the culvert, hit the diversion structure, which a cross-section is shown here, and then it would divert into a 12-inch pipe, ultimately into the infiltration basin, bioinfiltration basin for pretreatment, before filtering through the larger iron-enhanced sand filter. And that iron-enhanced sand filter, how it removes phosphorus is the iron filings actually will bind the phosphorus to it, and then the filter, the clean water, will filter down back into underdrains, which then return to the County ditch 13. So just a quick schedule of kind of tasks we've already done. There was a project feasibility study funded by the Watershed District. And then last fall into the spring, EOR completed final design and bid out the project to contractors, while at the same time in March, we met with Scott County staff and legal counsel, and the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed authorized EOR to complete the petition process. Our petition memo was submitted to Scott County in April, and then the Board of Commissioners deemed the petition complete and ordered the report of the findings for today at the May board meeting. Looking ahead, should the Commission choose to move forward with this, we would be looking at this month, working to finalize contracts with our contractor. That was the apparent low bid. And then approximate, this would obviously be dependent on the contractor, but we'd be looking late summer, early fall to actually move forward with constructing this project. Now I'll go through the key ditch impacts for this project. There are kind of four main impacts that we do see. The biggest one, obviously, being drainage. That is the primary utility of the ditch. So because this is the primary outlet of Swamp Lake, one key factor was that we certainly did not want to be raising the water levels within Swamp Lake, especially when you're looking at the very, very large rainfalls, such as the 24-hour, which is 7.3 inches, or the 30-day rainfall, which is about 14 and a half inches. So you can see, the outlet is designed so that we are not changing those conditions at all. Within the ditch itself, everything will be fully contained within the banks all the way through those large 7 and a half, 14 and a half inch vents. In this pretreatment area here, kind of between Red Wing Trail and the diversion, there will be a shallow ponding area, and that will be primarily for pretreatment to capture sediment, and the Watershed District staff will be responsible for cleaning that out. Currently, you can see on the right, it's a little bit hard to see, but there's, the culvert's kind of extruding out, there's about a four-foot headcut where that ditch is eroded away. So as part of this project, we will actually be filling that ditch back to its original profile. We will still be having about a one-inch, or, excuse me, a one-foot drop, but that will all be stabilized with riprap, and that'll provide a much cleaner profile connecting that outlet culvert to the diversion structure. And then looking at the weir itself within the diversion structure, this is the inlet pipe, a 36-inch matching the culvert under Red Wing Trail, 36-inch outlet, and then our 12-inch diversion. And then the diversion weir within here. Because of the proximity to Red Wing Trail, in order to prevent ice dams and oversaturation of that roadbed, Watershed District staff will be fully removing that weir late fall of every year and reinstalling it in the spring. So when that weir is removed, that ditch will be fully free-flowing, and there will not be any water diverting through the winter, just to ensure that there aren't any ice blockages, debris blockages, that might endanger either the ditch or the roadway. And then, as I'd mentioned earlier, working with county staff, and we did consult with a local contractor to ensure we're providing adequate width, we provided a minimum of a 20-foot wide bench along the top, and that was widened to 25 feet along the bends, ensuring that a contractor could get in, come in with a backhoe and a dump truck if there would need to be maintenance, cleaning out that southern bank of County ditch 13. So there would be sufficient access for equipment to traverse between the filter and the ditch itself and come all the way back around, all within the Watershed easement. So with that, I'm certainly available if there are any questions for either myself or the Watershed District.
Members, any questions for Mr. Crawford?
I've got one question. This particular iron filter is catching water coming off Swamp Lake, or it's gonna be set up right there. Then there's the, is there another iron filter close to, that was put, set up near 13?
Are you referring to the ferric chloride treatment building?
That's the one.
Yes. And actually, the Watershed, recently, very recently, that's actually my project as well, did retrofit that building and improve it to make it more efficient and really update it, because that building was 30, 35 years old. So that is a ferric chloride treatment system, so that's actually direct treatment within that, that ditch system before it enters Spring Lake and Prior Lake.
Right, right. Okay, all right. And, because there were some improvements to that also when 13 was redone?
Yep.
And then, and I remember when I was on the board, I remember the Watershed Board, that building was always a topic of interest, so.
Yep.
Good.
And it definitely still is.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, it sounds like you're getting them underway. So, no other questions?
If I can just ask, Mr. Chair, if you go back a few slides there, that ditch, you said you guys, you were gonna fill in with that, had that big pipe on it?
Yep.
What are you gonna fill that in with?
So it'll be onsite material. So it'll be, we'll scrape off all the vegetation, and then we'll pack it in with probably a sandy clay material, enough so that we can get a good layering on it. And then, you can kind of see, part of the reason it's headcut, the riprap is only kind of on the bank here, so as the water comes out, it's continually eating it away. Yep. So we'll be extending out the riprap so that we do have a good splash pool to stabilize that. And then we'll be coming in with a heavy-duty erosion control blanket to armor that.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, thank you very much. This was all information kind of heading us into this public hearing, which we are now ready to open. So with that...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. The public hearing is now open. If you would like to address the board in any form or fashion, written material, if you want to step to the podium and give us a, any kind of oral testimony, now is your opportunity. I mean, we hate to have you come all this way and then not avail yourself of this opportunity, right? And just click the microphone if you would, please, sir. Name, name, rank, and serial number for the, for the record.
Ted Kowalski, Spring Lake Township. I have the right to remain silent, but I couldn't do it. Question for the engineer. Does all the water get diverted through the iron filter? I don't think so.
No. Because of the size of it and the gravity, it'll be approximately equivalent to the one-year event, which is about three, two and a half to three inches. Anything that's not diverted will be, we kind of have a multi-tier system. There's an overflow within the structure itself, so that anything that comes over the weir ends up going out the culvert. Anything that goes over the top of the grade itself goes out, and then the berm itself has a stabilized overflow that would convey flow over.
So in normal conditions, will everything be treated?
Yes.
Yeah, so it'll get through there.
Correct.
And then how long will this thing last?
So the iron-enhanced sand filter, what, the limiting factor is the iron itself, and it depends a little bit on how much phosphorus it captures, because each molecule of iron can attach, I believe it's five molecules of phosphorus to it. So at 89 pounds a year, I'm trying to remember if you recall.
I think somewhere between 20 and 25 years.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you can replace this?
Correct, yeah. And with, because it's funded by a clean water-funded grant, the project life has to be 25 years for that. So even if the iron does use up earlier, the Watershed would be responsible to replace that and bring it back to its original condition.
Good. Is this similar? Did they put one of these in Prior Lake, right at the end of Mash Town Road?
Yeah, by McDonald's.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Yeah, great example.
Yep, that's all the questions I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Good information. These iron filters are popping up and doing their, doing their job. All right, any, any other individuals like to address the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, so at this point, we've heard some information. We've got, is there any guidance or any information, Mr. Kolb, that you would like to address based on what we've heard and seen here today?
If it's possible, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask the engineer a couple clarifying questions based on his responses to Mr. Kowalki from Spring Lake Township. And the first question is, I understand that based on the use of the grant funds that they're required to have a minimum service life of 25 years. I guess my first question is, what is the intent after the project has seen its service life? Is this, is the intent of the Watershed District that this be a permanent facility, and that it be rehabilitated, and the sand, iron-enhanced sand medium be replaced at that time, or is there some decommissioning plan for it? I think as we look at this from the Drainage Authority's perspective, we're granting authority for a permanent modification to the drainage system, and it'd be nice to know now whether there's an intent to decommission this and remove it at some point in the future.
Great question. The Watershed does have a permanent easement, so the plan is that this will be a permanent stormwater treatment facility. I think as technology advances in 25 years, there might be a newer technology that might, we might find it as better than iron-enhanced sand, but at this time, yes, the Watershed is planning that this will always be a permanent water treatment facility.
Thank you for that. And then, Mr. Chair, my last question, we do have a proposed finding and findings addressing the easement issue. At the time of its drafting, I was not aware that the Watershed District had yet obtained. The easement's necessary. I can go ahead and remove that as a finding, but I would ask that the Watershed District provide staff with a copy of those easements, just so that we can verify that they are for the area intended and that they're valid. I'm just assuming that the Watershed District's gonna take care of recording and the rest of it, but as of the date of my drafting, I had not seen that yet, so I'll have to take that out of the findings. Other than that, Mr. Chair, my only guidance to you is you do have a deliberation guide.
Mr. Kolb, can I just interrupt a minute?
I'm sorry.
This is Chris.
Please.
We were aware of the easement. It is recorded with our recorder's office, so we have viewed it, and we did take that out of the findings.
Oh, thank you for that.
Look at that, look at that. Efficient.
Not what I had in front of me. Your, your staff is right on it, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that. So then, other than that, as, as long as you find that this has some public or private benefit, and I think as it's been articulated, it's a water quality benefit, which has some public and private components to it, and if you find that its function will not impair the utility or use of the drainage system for other owners and will otherwise cause damage, then you can authorize this modification. I do have a draft of findings and an order in the, in the packet. I would only, and actually, it's been modified by your staff. I don't think that there were any comments given today that cast any doubt on the merits of the project. Rather, they were just clarifying in terms of how much water gets treated and how long will the facility last. Everything seems to be answered to the satisfaction of the board, and if not, please let me know, and we can make modifications. So my recommendation is that you adopt the findings and order as presented, but if you want to do any specific deliberations, you're welcome to do that as well.
Members, any further questions, deliberations? If you want us to walk through, this is a question to our attorney, to actually walk through again publicly, just the, the board deliberation of point number one, discussing the, the public or private benefit, or are we covered through that?
I think you're, you're covered through that, Mr. Chair. I think the time would be better spent if you wanted to spend time doing anything specifically. We'd be looking at the draft of findings and order, because those specific items that are in your deliberation guide are also listed as findings in that document.
So with that, then, then what we're saying is move to item 3.2, adopting that resolution, number 2025 dash 156, adopting findings and an order granting petition to modify, divert, and impound drainage system waters with conditions on CD 13, County ditch 13.
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt that resolution. Is there any further discussion? And I'm gonna also look to our attorney. Is there anything else we should be discussing at this particular point in this, in this procedural process here of discussion?
I believe your action on this motion will complete the proceedings today, Mr. Chair.
Fair enough. All right, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, adopt, the resolution is adopted. Moving to item number four.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
You all have a wonderful day.
You too, thank you. You too, thank you.
Pledge, but we had an earlier ditch board meeting and did the pledge then. So we're going to move to item number two amendments to the agenda. I did not see anything new, but I like to just look okay. We're going to stand as distributed. Item number three approving the minutes of the May 20th 2025 board meeting members. We had those sent out to us. Are there any changes? Any, any points of clarification? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes for the May 20th 2025 board meeting minutes. Any discussion? Otherwise all in favor?
Aye.
All right, those minutes are approved. I should also mention, I did not mention this, we are missing one of our commissioner Weckman Breckie who is in DC representing our interests. Thank you for that. And Cameron is probably watching live. Thank you. I'm going to wave. Thank you for doing that for us here representing, getting some good things changed in DC. Good luck. Item number four, new employees. We had some new employees. Why don't you come on over to start your way to the podium? We'll make sure that microphone is green. Just tell us who you are, maybe what you're doing here, where you came from, and some interesting fun fact. Take it away.
My name is Zach Baker, originally from Wisconsin, currently living in Edina. I'm joining the corrections facility as corrections officer. I enjoy being outdoors, hunting and fishing.
Nice. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kayla Reinhardt. I was born and raised in Jordan here in Minnesota, so very familiar with the county.
Yeah.
I'm going to be a corrections officer at the jail here and I am moving out of the county soon, hopefully.
Hopefully.
I love the county. I love the county.
Hopefully.
I love the county. It's just, I need more apartments.
Got it. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Elijah Schmeling. I was born in Minnesota. I'm joining the correctional officers facility as a correctional officer and I have explored with my parents most of the US, so.
Great. Welcome.
Hey, I'm Dustin Hunter Michael. I was born and raised in South Dakota and I just moved up here last fall. I did two, two and a half years in corrections in South Dakota and moved up here and continuing that, I guess. Thanks.
Welcome.
My name is Michael Shaughness. I'm a born and raised Minnesotan. I went to elementary school through high school in Chaska. I got my degree at the University of Minnesota Twin Cities Bachelor's of Arts in Political Science and, and I own a rabbit.
All right.
Oh, pretty good.
Lucky guy. Or is that just his foot?
I'm Kayla Rorich. I'm originally from Fargo-Moorhead area, so I recently relocated here a few weeks ago. I'll be working in the mental health center for business information systems. And fun fact, I like to travel internationally.
Great. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen. I joined the county attorney's office in the criminal division. I'm from Iowa, but I came up here for St., to St. Thomas for law school and I love it up here. And this summer I'm trying to grow a vegetable garden for the first time.
Nice. Good luck with that. Yeah. Welcome. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to look for your cue because I don't know if we're going to the bus tour. Yes, there he is. So thank you for coming and introducing yourselves and you are the hands and feet and faces of Scott County, so welcome and best of luck. I don't believe in luck, so Godspeed. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move to item number five, recognition of interested citizens. It's a great opportunity for you to address the board about anything that's not on the agenda. Kara Skys here.
Hi.
You've just come confluence to that mic and anyone else can be prepared to come after for sure. Welcome. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I am here at the request of a few commissioners that mentioned it when I did a demonstration or spoke with you all back in April regarding the volunteer program. So you did ask for me to come every couple of months or so during this period of recognizing citizens to talk to you about volunteer opportunities. So I wanted to showcase three volunteer opportunities that we currently have ongoing. We have about 18 going on right now, but these are three big ones that I'm working on. So I kind of wanted to just showcase that, let the people know that are watching on TV if they would like to become a part of our volunteer program. First one I'm doing an outreach on is Damascus Way. So they are a nonprofit that I'm sure you all heard of during the nonprofit presentation at the board workshop. They are looking for advisory board committee members. So I did an outreach for anybody who is interested in becoming a part of their advisory committee. They have subcommittees that are featuring fundraising, innovative opportunities and expansion and special interest. So we have so far recruited 21 people and they want to continue to look for some more people. They're doing interviews and speaking with the volunteers that are interested. That is still an ongoing recruitment volunteer opportunity, so anybody who's interested can reach out to me or apply through our website. The second one we have is emergency management and our medical reserve corps. That is an ongoing one that we're always asking for volunteers. There was an article put in the scene this month regarding that. So we are looking for a variety of people that would be involved in our emergency management program and the MRC, which is our medical reserve corps. So that's more doctors, nurses, people that work in the medical field and then emergency management. This is a unique group because this is a group that kind of sits in our database until we have an emergency opportunity. So that is another opportunity people can go ahead and apply for. And then the third opportunity to showcase is one with Three Rivers and in partnership with Met Council. It is involving the Doyle-Kennefick Regional Park. They are looking for people to do counting. So a summer opportunity to count individuals that are coming into the park. There are a two-hour shift opportunities from eight in the morning until eight in the evening. And you would be sitting outside or if you want to sit in your vehicle, you can do so and you'll be counting people that are coming into the park and utilizing the park, people that are driving, how many vehicles are coming in, and then a couple other questions that they are requiring. So a simple volunteer opportunity, two hours or as many opportunities as you want to sign up. There are 52 shifts throughout the summer months. So if anybody is interested, they can go to our Scott County website, which is scottcountymn.gov. You can click on the tab for community, go to the bottom and then it has volunteer opportunities and then you can click to become a volunteer and fill out the information.
Great. That is, that's, yeah, so many different opportunities. Thank you for mentioning that, where the link is and maybe we can get that posted out there as well. And so with Doyle-Kennefick, if we, because that's one of our newer, I mean, not, not, not a new piece of dirt, but newer as far as getting that park underway as far as some sort of development. So if we keep driving out there during these windows and walk, then the numbers will hear like, oh, we need to expand that more quickly. Okay. Got it.
There you go.
Did I say that out loud? Okay.
Can I just comment that I volunteered a few years ago for SafeCom and emergency management.
Yeah.
So I was trained on weather awareness and how to best take care of my neighborhood because your first, first ability to respond is to your neighbors. So it was a great opportunity to learn what was going on and to serve the counties. So hopefully people get out there and sign up for it.
Yes, definitely. All right.
Thank you so much. The volunteer moment. Thank you so much for that. All right, anyone else? Not seeing anyone. We're going to move on to item number six, the consent agenda. I'll read through, what do we have here? We have 14 different items that will all pass in one motion. All of the work has been done ahead of time. Item number 6.1, adopt resolution number 2025-119 authorizing entering a grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Services for fraud prevention investigation funds. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2025-137 authorizing entering into agreement with Dakota Paper Company for paper products and cleaning supplies. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2025-142 approving a preliminary plat of Brink Business Park consisting of two lots, Brink Development LLC applicant and property owner and three-way development agreement. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2025-143 approving a preliminary plat of Brink Business Park second edition consisting of 18 lots and one outlot, Brink Development LLC applicant and property owner and three-way development agreement. 6.5, adopt resolution number 2025-145 approving an amendment to Scott County zoning ordinance number three, chapter 17 cannabis land uses and chapter 20-4 use table to permit outdoor cultivation and the sale of lower potency hemp edible products. 6.6, adopt resolution number 2025-146 authorizing the lawful gambling premises permit application for the Bell Plain Chamber at Union Trail Brewery in Blakely Township. 6.7, adopt resolution number 2025-148 authorizing amending the budget for utilization of American Rescue Plan Act funds contract increase and final payment to Ebert companies for the Cleary Lake Campground Compliance Project. 6.8, adopt resolution number 2025-151 authorizing entering into an agreement with Erickson Engineering for engineering design services. 6.9, adopt resolution number 2025-153 approving conservation easements for the final plat of Sand Hill Meadow and vacating conservation easements for lot one, block one, Sunrise Ridge. Thomas Anderson applicant and Ryan Shimick property owner. 6.10, adopt resolution number 2025-155 approving benefits, benefit providers, counting contributions and employee costs for insurance benefits and authorizing a budget amendment. 6.11, adopt resolution number 2025-157 authorizing a lawful gambling off-site premise permit for Shakopee Dollars for scholars in Cedar Lake Township. 6.12, adopt resolution number 2025-158 approving the repurchase of tax forfeited property in the city of Shakopee. 6.13, approve appointment and reappointment of citizens to advisory committee. 6.14, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Members, those are the 14 items listed on consent. Are there any items or clarifications you'd like to make?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion on our 14 items on consent? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item 7.1, adopt resolution number 2025-114 approving an interim use permit amendment for a private day park to allow private events and annual temporary cannabis event Severs Festivals LLC applicant and River Valley Partners LLP property owner. 7.1. Good morning. Grant, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I am doing well on this rainy day.
It is.
This is the site location map of the Severs Festival property in sections 33 and 34 of Louisville Township. In 2019, Severs Festivals obtained an interim use permit for a private day park to relocate their for a private day park to relocate their, uh, fall festival from within the city of Shakopee near Canterbury to this property in Louisville Township. Uh, in addition to their annual fall festival event, uh, they were also approved for a winter lights display that they also hold on the property. Uh, the festival site is located on the southeast corner of US Highway One Sixty Nine and County Road Fourteen with the festival entrance located across from the Louisville Frontage Road, uh, as shown here on this, on the aerial photo. Uh, Severs is permitted to hold their fall festival on weekends from mid-August to the first weekend in November. Uh, and then their winter lights drive-through display from mid-November through January. So the windy area on the northwest part of the property is where they generally do their winter lights display, their drive-through. Uh, the fall festival is held on the, generally at the south side of the, uh, the tree area there. As part of their, at the same time as their original IUP approval, uh, construction realignment occurred for the County Road Fourteen, US Highway One Sixty Nine intersection uh, ahead of Severs' first, uh, season of operation here. Uh, project improvements included the construction of Louisville Frontage Road to the north of the property, uh, as well as putting in turn lanes, uh, both for the frontage road and for the entrance to Severs Festival. This is oriented north would be to the left side here, but this is just a example or aerial drone shot of the Severs Festival site as it's set up, uh, typical for their fall festival. Uh, the request before the board today, uh, Severs Festivals is requesting to amend their interim use permit uh, to add a two-day cannabis event, uh, that is titled The Doobie Dabbler, uh, make that annually part of their festival, fall festival event. And then to allow, um, the addition of private events where they can rent out their site throughout the year. Uh, Severs, uh, to accomplish this goal, Severs met, uh, this past spring with representatives from Louisville Township, uh, Scott County staff, and the Scott County Sheriff's Department to discuss the IUP amendment. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, uh, Severs received a certificate of compliance from Scott County and Louisville Township, uh, to host the two-day adult-only cannabis-centric, uh, event named The Doobie Dabbler. Uh, and this was held on the second weekend of September in twenty twenty-four. We did it through a certificate of compliance because this was a new type of event. The county had not yet adopted cannabis regulations. So we kinda approved it in the same vein as a large assembly permit that the county also issues. Um, the festival consisted of many of the same amenities here. Um, it was again set up during their fall festival, so the corn maze was there, uh, a lot of their other amenities. Uh, but then also had offerings for hemp-derived products. Uh, the second part of the amendment is for private events. Uh, Severs has been contacted by private entities such as schools, uh, businesses, church groups, families, and cultural groups, uh, to rent or lease their site for private gatherings, mostly during the fall festival when it's set up, uh, as you see here. Uh, when a lot of their, you know, the corn maze and other activities are set up, they have schools that have been asking, you know, can we bus kids out, you know, to use the, the site during, during the week? Uh, because currently the fall festival, um, is permitted and they're open only on Saturdays and Sundays, uh, but they do extend out for MEA weekend. So those are the two parts of the request, so I'll kinda go over those, uh, independently here. So this was the narrative, uh, that Severs provided for their Doobie Dabbler. As indicated, it's adult-only cannabis-centric event. Um, Scott County adopted cannabis regulations following legislation passed by the state of Minnesota for cannabis legalization. Uh, these regulations allow for a two-day temporary cannabis event to be held annually. Um, so therefore, what Severs is doing here is they're choosing to make that part of their IUP rather than having to apply, uh, for a separate permit annually. Uh, so that we're gonna incorporate conditions for that event into their IUP. Uh, the Dabbler event would occur during the time for in the fall festival, generally the weekend after Labor Day and before they open up for the family fall festival weekend, as the Dabbler is the eighteen-plus ticketed event. Um, so basically just in here are, you know, their narrative on how they will, um, you know, apply with all county and state laws, how they deal with safety, uh, lighting, and, um, and then that onsite cannabis consumption will be allowed per state and federal laws. Um, so this is just kind of a, a better layout of what they have or intend to have for their Dabbler. As, as indicated, um, they have more products for either display or they have vendors come in that, um, that are in the hemp or cannabis industry. And so a lot of this festival will just be more vendor booths for, uh, advertising those types of, of products. But generally, again, since it's in September, the fall festivals will, setup will already be done. So the parking and everything will be organized just like any other weekend during that time. For private events, uh, as indicated, uh, generally they're, uh, getting inquiries from, um, schools, churches, private businesses, uh, mainly during the fall festival timeframe since the site is set up with the corn maze, the jumping pillows, the corn bin, that, um, Severs only operates Saturdays and Sundays. So they're getting inquiries, well, could we bring a group out on a Friday or a Thursday during the week? And that would be leased out for a private event. So basically, this narrative, uh, just indicates that that's generally what they're gonna do. However, under number four, um, dates for hot, hosting private events would be May through December. Um, they may have an opportunity, uh, they, they had an inquiry from a cultural festival that just wanted to hold a, uh, a one-day cultural event. Or, um, uh, Mitch Michelson from Severs is here, he can talk in more detail. But they also had an inquiry about a food truck festival one day, you know, during the summer. So it would be things like that. And so it would generally be set up in the same way, um, you know, during the fall festival, unless they had something during the summer where they would, um, make, uh, make adjustments to that specific group. For the private event, uh, oh, yeah. So, I'm sorry, for the private event, we have conditions that I'll go over here in a second on how we would review and permit those. Um, and just so the board knows, this goes back to the cannabis event. So the Minnesota Office, Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management, um, they issue licenses for sales, growing, um, manufact, you know, packaging of cannabis. But this language, it's from April, but this is specific to, uh, temporary cannabis events. So similar to the county, we've adopted language. But, uh, they would need to get a license from the Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management. And Mr. Michelson has indicated that because Severs is in the, uh, growing of hemp and, and similar products, that they have applied, uh, to the state for a license. And within that license, they have added, uh, their two-day event as part of that application. So this just is to show the board that they would need to get a license, uh, from the OCM. And it does have regulations in there regarding public consumption, sale of cannabis products at events. And then, um, local considerations is just that they would work with the local government, be it the county and township, on, uh, the organization of that event. So, uh, lastly here, these are the conditions, uh, currently of the permit. We're changing the name from Sever Peterson to Severs Festivals. And then specifically, uh, condition number five talks about the temporary cannabis event. Uh, so it's just noted that the event shall meet all requirements of the State Office of Cannabis Management and Scott County zoning, zoning ordinance for a temporary event. So this would include providing the county, uh, copy of the state-approved license. Condition number six then is pertaining to renting the site for private events, and that should be in accordance with their private events narrative. At the Planning Commission meeting, there was one neighboring resident who, uh, approached the podium and talked about just being notified because they weren't aware of the, the cannabis event happening. And they didn't have any issues necessarily, they just wanted to know what was going on. So, um, we phrase this condition to be similar to our large assembly ordinance or a large assembly permit where, um, any event that would have two-hundred-and-fifty or more individuals would generally require a certificate of compliance, which is, even if it's a large family event on private property, if you have over two-hundred-and-fifty people, you're supposed to notify the county and the county sheriff's office. And we work on the organization. So any, so Severs would be able to rent out. So if, if it's a school for a hundred kids, not a problem. But if it's gonna be a larger, like, food truck festival, those are the things where they would have to talk to the county township and county sheriff's department and get that certificate of compliance. So, um, that's how we phrase that condition. And then last thing I wanna point out, condition number twenty-three, we're removing, um, Severs was required as a condition of their original IUP, uh, to participate in the, uh, costs of the turn lanes. So they did that back in twenty nineteen. They did, they were assessed for, uh, helping, uh, with those costs. So, uh, we're just removing that. Uh, Louisville Township did recommend approval of the private day park, uh, for private events and annual cannabis event. And I would stand for any questions. And Mitch Michelson, representing Severs Festivals, is here if you have any questions for him as well.
All right, thank you very much, members. Any questions for Greg or Mr. Michelson? All right, so then we're looking at adopting Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash One One Four, and I won't read any more than that in case somebody else wants to.
I'll make the motion to approve that, uh, resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I mean, he came all this way. Are we sure? We don't wanna get him up on the podium to say any?
No free joints or anything?
No. Oh, that came from.
On the record.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Um, any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, the resolution passes with some extra.
Thank you.
Whatever that's called. Thank you. Um, all right, we're gonna move to item number eight, Committee Reports and Commissioner Updates. Again, Commissioner Weckman-Brackey is in DC doing the good work of the county, so I will look to Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the twentieth, Elka and New Market had their quarterly meeting. Uh, attended with Administrator Vermillion, the mayor and administrator of, uh, Elka and New Market. They got a lot of good things going on there. The water plant's doing well. Uh, we still, um, are hoping to get that bridge fixed at some point in the next twenty years, fifty years. Anyhow, and on the twenty-first, uh, the Insurance Committee met, talked a lot about dental insurance and, uh, a couple of things with the health insurance there, so that's doing very well. Uh, twenty-second, the Vermillion River Joint Powers Organization, uh, on that, that evening, Elka and New Market City had a short meeting. On the twenty-seventh, a very nice flag-raising ceremony. Also had my, uh, monthly administrator meeting. On the twenty-eighth, the town chairs, uh, met downstairs here. Talked a lot about roads and county-state aid highways and, uh, funding and all that stuff. So, um, very educational. Some people there are newer and some have been around a while, but, uh, I think everybody learned something. On the second, uh, last night, Credit River and Cedar Lake met. Uh, things kinda quiet in those neighborhoods, uh. And then this morning, I just had a, a short visit with the Credit River Mayor about the, uh, ditch number four, which is called Credit River. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gonna move down to Commissioner Brennan.
Um, May twentieth was the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District meeting. And most of, or a lot of that conversation was regarding ditch thirteen, which we talked about earlier today. Um, May twentieth, and I also attended the Shakopee City Council meeting. Um, the Sand Venture, which is at Lyons Park, will be opening on June sixth.
Nice.
Um, a nonprofit came to speak, um, regarding the impact of the recently approved hotel ordinance um, on that organization. Um, they are currently working with six individuals. The hotel ordinance will impact, um, organizations and people who are living, fleeing domestic assault situations, um, as well as people needing short-term, short-term housing. Um, that ordinance will prohibit people from staying at hotels. The May twenty-first was the AMC Legislative Update. May twenty-first, um, was also the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District meeting. Uh, May twenty-second was the tour of the Shakopee Amphitheater. Um, and that was hosted by the One Sixty Nine Coalition. Um, and then I, after that, I attended the, um, inter, uh, intergovernmental, intergovernmental working group meeting. Um, May twenty-third was the AMC Solid Waste Working Group Committee. Um, we had presentations, um, from Demicon and, uh, Waste Management on what they're doing for solid waste. Um, May twenty-seventh was the Scott County Flag-Raising Ceremony. Um, it was a great opportunity to support, um, the veterans in our, in our, um, county. May twenty-seventh was the Mental Health LAC. Um, there was a presentation from Three Rivers Scott County Park District, um, regarding the wellness program. Um, May twenty-eighth was the One Sixty Nine Groundbreaking. Uh, May twenty-eighth was also a presentation from AMC on veterans' housing. Um, and May thirtieth, I had a meeting with Councilmember Delaney, um, and then, um, Peter Goldstein and Tanya Ward regarding the ordinance that Shakopee has put, put out for hotels.
Great. Thank you very much. Looking down to my far left, Commissioner Alrick.
All right, on the twenty-first, the Transportation Advisory Board, pretty routine items. Twenty-second, the RTF, uh, planning meeting, uh, regional training facility planning meeting. I think that we'd say there, um, the members in, now in this committee that are working in the Going Forward Plan are kind of maybe rightsizing their hopes or expectations and, and trying to come back with what they would like to see in a phased approach. There are things, obviously, that people would like to see eventually that aren't realistic and, and a one-size, uh, to start off, but maybe in a phased approach. I was surprised, it seems like there has become a consensus to tear down the building. And that seemed to me to be something that maybe occurred between meetings that I said, well, uh, gee, it seems like there are consensus here, but I don't think the county board has actually talked much about that. Um, so, and I think if we did a phased approach, that wouldn't even be in the first phase. So it's, it's probably not an imminent concern. Maybe it is, I don't know. But I think the board needs to discuss that. Uh, twenty-seventh, the Flag-Raising Ceremony, and then Chair Vice Chair. I, I found the Flag-Raising Ceremony more meaningful to me than usual because I was asked to speak at it. So I kinda reflected on the meaning of that almost all week, you know. And if you know me at all, if I get asked to speak something, I stew over it. Whenever, whatever I get asked or whatever it is, if it's months away, I'm in trouble because I'll be thinking about it for months. Anyhow, I'm just sort of kidding on that. But it was very meaningful for me. Anyhow, the twenty-eighth, um, was also meaningful for me because my son came back from the Marines with, uh, rated a hundred percent disability. So I was more in tune with, and Memorial Day, we recognize those that gave all, but then there's those that came back. And we might even not realize how much, you know, they sort of gave of themselves in their service, even though you look at them and say, you look completely fit, you know. But yet they might have disabilities that are gonna affect them later in life. So I kinda, I know that's not traditionally what you remember on Memorial Day, but that's more a Veterans Day thing, I think. But I wanted to call attention to it, so I did. Uh, the twenty-eighth, the Interchange Groundbreaking Ceremony, very, very good. Boy, I couldn't believe the amount of speakers. I think there were ten scheduled speakers. They sort of streamlined it a little bit on the way. I said, you know, they're gonna say, uh, this is great, this is safer, and this happened because of collaboration. And I thought, everything's gonna be around that. I mean, so how many ten different ways can you say basically that? But it was very good. Everybody, um, spoke well. And I think the one thing I would say on our ceremonies, we, staff don't get properly appreciated, I don't think. I think we need to make that more in our talking points. You know, Lisa Fries and her team, without their tireless work, we wouldn't be having, uh, you know, ribbon cuttings or groundbakeings regarding the transportation projects. You know, their, their applications, the way they cobble together money, you know, and their, their behind-the-scenes work. The elected ones are more, you know, they just kinda help a little bit along the way. The staff is doing the lion's share, in my opinion. So I'm hoping that we will more mention them in our, in our appreciation in the future ceremonies. Uh, twenty-ninth, Three Rivers Scott County Partnership Committee Meeting, uh, preliminary budget. I think they wanna increase the budget by like a hundred and forty-five thousand, which is, in the scope of things, is modest. But I, I pointed out, you know, we're facing, uh, looking at every penny. We're probably, you know, basing it. We're probably, you know, based on state cuts and federal cuts, we're, it's going to be really quite an exercise, looking at every penny, every expenditure, so it can't be business as usual in terms of, well, this is kind of what we normally get an increase every year. Even that one should be looked at, so, you know, I pointed that out, but maybe we have a way that that can be fully funded, but still, obviously, we're looking at every penny.
Yeah.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Yes, please.
Can I just comment, when you said staff, you know, doing these projects, Lisa Fries and I were out at that one sixty-nine, two eighty-two, I don't know, six, seven years ago, and then we were, because we were going to lobby in front of Angie Craig and Dean Phillips at the time, and we were going through the grass, because there's crucifixes out there, the people who, I think, it was like, took a picture, I think there was seven of them out there, and we lost at that time, I think it was State Highway seven or something out there. There was a lot more tragedies than this, so anyhow, I'm glad this got done, but yeah, you're right. We're trouncing through this tall, awful grass, but I'm so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, five twenty, postboard workshop, five twenty-two amphitheater, which reminds me, we need to get the, I think you posted, did you post some pictures on there? I need to post some pictures. I might need to get that one particular picture and get that posted for the amphitheater. Quite a project out there, and we think it's going to be, what, next spring-ish? So we'll be looking for that next, this time next year. Then from there, went to the IWG, twenty-seventh, had Chair Vice Chair, did that remotely, so yes, thank you for doing those flag-raising comments. I found myself out in the Carolinas for a wedding. Just was an interesting place to be on Memorial Day, thinking of all the lives that have been given for this great country, both Civil War area, internally and external conflicts that have gone on to give us our freedom, and do not want to take that for granted, so thank you for stepping in, doing those comments. I'm glad I didn't ask you two months in advance, it was only a week, so kept the stewing to a minimum. Also attended on the twenty-eighth, the two eighty-two, one sixty-nine groundbreaking. I mean, that has been talked about and talked about, and I know some of the comments were like, twenty-five years, like, takes a while, unfortunately, the speed of government, and you're right, different intersections have different numbers. This thing is, should have been done ten, twelve years ago, but there were reasons why it wasn't, and design aspects, I mean, the city gets to have a lot of control over what that design looks like. I'm just glad we're getting rid of those stoplights and making that safer for everybody, because I do go through that, and I've always told people, like, especially my kids, like, if you're going through that, I mean, you, you, an abundance of caution, because you just never know highway speeds coming out of that town, so glad that's underway. And then also, that day, Fish Board Meeting. On the twenty-ninth, I came in remotely to the Three Rivers Policy, as was talked about, committee meeting, earlier this morning with the Ditch Board, and new employee orientation, so that concludes my report. So I'll look down to the left, county administrator update.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to add this far.
All right, let's see if we can double down on that, as I look to the right to the county attorney.
You can double down on that.
Nice, all right. So with that, before we adjourn, we will be meeting after this meeting in a workshop to discuss Lower Minnesota River Watershed District fiscal workshop, and then just any other Commissioner Round Robin updates, which, by the way, this meeting is always open to the public, as is the workshop that we will be going into, that is always open to the public. So with that, item number eleven, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion in a lagging second.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.